We're going to start this meeting off. Good evening, welcome to this school board meeting. Tonight is Monday, September 22, 2014. We'll start off with roll call. It looks as though all members except Director Corman are here. We had a call from her at the last minute and she's hoping to attend this evening. Want to ask you at this time to stand and restart the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nations and our ally and unit as well for the greater good of justice for all.
All right, looking for an approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we move into recognition of students, staff, and public. And this evening from Jefferson High School, production of The Jungle Book, we have Laura Schmidt to help us understand what we're going to hear and see. Thank you Laura.
Well, thank you for having us. I'm Laura Schmidt and I'm directing The Jungle Book, which is going to be next week at Jefferson. And this is our children's show that we invite our schoolchildren to come for field trips. And then we actually have our public shows that will be next weekend. We're going to do a little scene from the beginning of the show. It's set in India. And the story is that the mother has taken her baby Mogli into the jungle to escape the wolf, or the shirkaan, the tiger. And the mother has to go and try to beat away the tiger. And while the mother is gone, the mother wolf comes and finds the little baby Mogli and then takes Mogli into her family. So we are just going to do a little scene from that. And why don't you girls do it over here, the two mothers. You ready? I will never give up searching for you, Natu. I will light a candle to Lakshmi Mata every night. She will bring you home to me. Mother has spoken. The sky listens well, for a mother's heart knows the jungle love. My hands can't protect you, but Mata listens well and she knows I respect the jungle love. Come, meet your brothers and sisters, little one, little frog. Mogli, Mogli, little frog. Yes, Mogli, little frog I will call you. Mother has spoken. The pack listens well, for a mother's heart is the beat of a jungle love. The pack will protect you. The pack listens well, for every wolf must respect the jungle love. When the sun has dropped from the sky and the moon rises up, rises high, we sing to the moon. We sing to the moon. Keep the moon in your side, you're safe in the night, my son. In the moonlight. Now the sun has dropped from the sky and the moon rises up, rises high, I sing to the moon. I sing to the moon. Keep the two in your side, you're safe in the night, my son. In the moonlight. My two, my little boy. My little frog. You'll come home to me, you'll be safe and free. I will keep a candle burning. Oh, the pack will share the learning. Goodbye, my son, my son, my little frog. Goodbye, in the moonlight. In the moonlight. In the moonlight. In the moonlight.
I'd like to have the kids introduce themselves if that is okay. We'll start with Ms. Suwa, she's the mother.
I'm Morgan Kempton.
What grade are you in?
I'm in 11th grade at Jefferson High School.
I'm Lucas Thurston, I'm in 9th grade at Jefferson High School.
I'm Maria Walharts, I'm in 11th grade at Jefferson High School.
I'm Maya Mick, I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Kate, I'm in 9th grade.
And I'm Lydia and I'm in 9th grade.
So we hope you'll all be able to join us, not this weekend but the following weekend for Jungle Book. Thank you.
Thanks troops, that was a lot of fun. So we're looking at October 3rd, 4th, and 5th, right?
Correct.
All right, we have a couple of 7 o'clock shows and then October 5th is a 3:00 PM show. So if you want to make the afternoon show, it certainly is worth it. All right, next up, we'd like to introduce Normandale Community College President, Dr. Joyce Esther. And to do that would be our Superintendent Les Fujitaki.
Please join me, please Joyce. Last year, Minskew Chancellor Steve Rosenstone invited me to serve on the search process, the team, to select the new president for Normandale Community College. Because Normandale Community College is a friend of our district and a strategic partner, I gladly accepted. I was also on the previous search team that found the past president, Joe Olpat. Now, the search process is confidential, but I can tell you that I'm really, really pleased that the chancellor offered the position to Joyce. And I'm glad Dr. Esther accepted. She has a tremendous track record of success. She has lots of energy and great ideas. And I remember during the search process, the interview process, she talked about her commitment to being engaged in the community. And on Saturday, she was part of the parade. So I'm going to leave the introduction part of her background to her and wish her the best. And I'm honored to introduce Dr. Joyce Esther to all of you.
Thank you Les. Hello.
Hello. Good evening.
Okay, I'm going to do y'all like I do everybody on my campus. Hello.
Hello.
I am really honored to be here and thank you Les for the invitation. I think Les and other members of the community have been very welcoming to me. Les came to my office to welcome me to this community and so I'm very, very thankful to be here. I'm really excited about this opportunity to partner with K-12, P-12. And if you've read any of my bio, my doctorate is in child and adolescent development although my undergraduate degree is in the sociology of health and aging. So I like to say I have that whole lifespan thing that's happening. But I'm really excited and I really want to get to know the community. I've been really excited about my faculty and my staff, the wonderful programs, Dimensions Academy, our articulation agreements, all of those kinds of things are the kinds of things that we can be doing. There's a lot of things we can be doing better, things that we can be doing more of. I was on a panel yesterday and we were talking about the achievement gap and all those kinds of things. And one of the things that we all talked about was that achievement gap is an issue, but it can be solved. And I think if you have the right people around the table and the people who are really passionate about helping our children. And I also like to say, when the least of us succeed, then we all succeed. And so we really need to be able to do the good work. So I'm really excited to be here. I'm not really sure what else. My folks know that I tend to talk a lot and fast, so I am going to be quiet and leave. And I do apologize that I can't stay further. My mother's coming into town, so I need to, you know, take care of that stuff too. So, thank you so very much. And please come on our campus. I'll be happy to show you all around if you haven't been there and invite me more often so that I can get involved. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much for coming, Dr. Esther. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to the board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? I'm looking into the audience and I see some young, fresh faces, although I wouldn't especially say that you fit in our seniors. I'm not looking at high school seniors, we don't have any here for our 12th grade government classes. If we did, we'd ask them to come on up and share who they are, what their teacher is, and what grade they're in, or what school. We'll move on to the Part A agenda. We're looking for a motion to approve as it is.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Turn our agenda over to Part B, which is on the back. And the very first thing on here is a policy review. We're looking for first reading for a couple of policies to help us understand. It would be Eric Melby. Eric, why don't you introduce your guest with you? The first one we're going to look at is the Policy 419 Tobacco-Free Environment.
Thank you Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I've got Eileen O'Connell with me, she's with Bloomington Public Health. And since we are updating our tobacco-free policy, the city's also been doing some work around their tobacco policies and especially with e-cigarettes and those kinds of devices being in the news so much. Thought it would be nice to share some information with the school board about where the city's at with this stuff as well.
Thank you, Eileen. Jim, you had your hand raised, I assume you want to read this one?
Well, I was just curious if that's what we're going to do first before we get the other information, Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and read it in.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of revised Policy 419 Tobacco-Free Environment.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. What can you tell us that we need to know about this one?
Well, the policy was in need of updating, so I'm glad that we're updating it. It had been a while and there's been a lot of developments in, you know, tobacco use in terms of devices and things, which Eileen will speak to a little bit. So it's really MSBA policy update. We did take out our previous policy, had some pretty specific language around consequences for behaviors and for tobacco use. And really, we cover that in our discipline policy, so it was good to get that out of the regulation part of there. Otherwise, like I said, I've got just a little bit of feedback. Board Member Oliva had some good thoughts about just kind of simplifying the language in terms of, you know, long laundry lists of people to just being people in some ways. So for the second reading, we will update some things based on that and any other feedback we get for the second reading. And it'll be a simpler, easier-to-read policy, I think. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments? Yeah, Director Sorum.
Within the policy, we always hear or have heard, it doesn't, what about this item? Or what about this unit, or this tobacco? So sometimes we've over expanded the list of possible, what it means to derive, you know, inhaling from this or that, or whatever it is. And so when you say you're going to simplify it and make it easier, it doesn't exclude all of those different tobacco products that are identified and whatever derivatives of those types of things, you know, are still going to be identified as...
Those would still be identified in the policy, yeah. The simplification would be more around some of the things, I'm not looking exactly where it is, but it lists specific people when it's really all people that are, we're a tobacco-free environment. So trying to simplify in that way. But the list, I think, is helpful because there are so many new ways to use tobacco or tobacco-like products at this point, so.
Yeah, there's a lot more than when I was younger, smoking tobacco product.
Just for clarification, one of the things I had mentioned is, for instance, under Part 2A, it says a violation of this policy occurs when any student, teacher, administrator, other school personnel of the school district, or person, smokes or uses tobacco. And I said, whoa. Since those are all people, not aliens or dogs, wouldn't it make more sense to just say a violation of this policy occurs when any person smokes or uses tobacco? So it was small things like that, it wasn't meant to be anything... It just, to me, it made it easier to read.
I agree. And I asked David Holman for his thoughts on that and he was in agreement.
Well, attorneys always like to use three words where one will do.
We could just say person three times. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Excuse me, if not, I'd like to, just in the middle here, have Eileen share, or would you rather...
If you'd like to, Eileen, yes, please.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me time on your agenda tonight. Public Health was asked to present the city's proposed code changes, or ordinance changes, to the school board because we're really looking at that these affect youth and it's part of the reason that we're revisiting these, to do basic tobacco prevention for youth. So I'm going to keep my comments brief. I have shortened a number of slides, so I know your agenda is full. There are really other cities, and listed are the cities that have visited this or about to. These are all the cities that have definitely, as far as e-cigarettes. And this is Brooklyn Center and now St. Paul have made changes when it comes to pack size. And it's based on the law changed by the state, so we're revisiting it locally. So there are really three changes in the areas of city code. The first including e-cigarettes or electronic cigarettes in parks and public places code. The second is prohibiting vaping lounges and sampling. And then also including e-cigarettes into the Clean Indoor Air Act. This is all workplaces, including restaurants. We don't have any bars in Bloomington, so it's just restaurants. And adding the requirements that cigars are sold for a minimum of $2.60 a piece, or they're sold in packs of five or more. So we're changing that as well. We, like I said, are making these changes to really continue with the work that's been done with youth tobacco prevention. We're having a public hearing on these changes. In fact, it was just scheduled tonight, so I can say that it's been scheduled for the 3rd of November at our city council and we'll have a public comment period during that city council meeting. If you have thoughts or comments about these proposed changes, please feel free to contact the mayor or city council members. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Yeah, Jim.
Mr. Bergstrom, Eric, and Eileen too. So the city code changes haven't been instituted yet, they're going to be at November 3rd. Hopefully, they will be approved and then go into code. So by us having the first reading of this starts us on the way, I don't know when the second reading would be, but at least there will be timed enough so that all of a sudden we can say, yeah, the schools and the city are enforcing these changes.
All right, any other questions?
Well, we're going to change our policy, so regardless of what the city does anyway, correct? Even if they don't change it, we're still going to change ours, so.
It's just serendipity.
Yeah.
Did I use that word right?
All right.
You know, I had one question. So like in 4A, where it says a violation of this policy does not occur when an Indian adult lights tobacco on school district property as part of traditional Indian spiritual cultural ceremony. The city change isn't going to affect that, right? The city policies? Or they wouldn't have any effect on our ability to keep that in our policy? Because what I'm assuming is if the city has, changes the policy on Clean Indoor Air Act or anything like that, then we would be out of compliance if we weren't at least at that level. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Well, I think it's a great question that we can, you know, review before the second reading, talk to Mr. Holman about that.
I'd take a look at it, but I do think that constitutional religious rights would trump that kind of prohibition.
So, yeah, okay.
We'll clarify for the second reading though, that's a good question.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Let's move on to the next one here, which is Policy 501. This is Weapon-Free Schools. Who would like to read this one?
I'd be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of revised Policy 501 Weapon-Free Schools.
Second.
All right, Tom and Maureen, we have Eric to help us out here.
Sure. Again, not a whole lot of change from our previous policy, but slightly updated and really following MSBA policy, model policy. There was some discussion at an earlier board meeting this summer, I can't remember which one exactly, about our weapons policy in regards to trap club or archery club, or whatever the case may be. So the updated policy does have, in the very beginning, kind of the language we had before, no student, non-student shall possess or use a distributed weapon in a school location except as provided in this policy. That's a slight change. And then after having discussions with other folks on cabinet and with David Holman, we believe that the, under the exceptions category, we're okay with the clubs that might use those types of devices. Of course, if any kid or student, you know, is inappropriate with any kind of device, it would still fall under our discipline policy. So really, you know, that's the update.
Okay. All right, any questions on this one? Jim?
And then once again, just a question, a question on definition under 3A weapons, where it talks about in names, as many of the things that could be considered weapons or look-alike weapons, or something like that.
Right.
Is it there's something we could put in it to say, or anything that we think is a weapon? Not necessarily that, but I mean, how do we know we're catching everything and then somebody's going to say, a lawyer's going to say, no, this isn't really a weapon as defined under your policy?
I would say it's a great question. I also think when it says any thing capable of threatening, producing bodily harm, including but not limited to, kind of, that would be my interpretation of a, more room to be looking at whatever is brought to school.
Right. I think you're right, but Jim raises some good points that are really hard to talk about. I mean, we've had kids use pencils as weapons and obviously, we're not going to be banning those in the schools. It gets tough because almost anything can be used as a weapon. But there are certain things we're just plain going to ban and that's really what we're trying to cover in the policy. But the discipline policy does allow us to go after, enforce our discipline policy against students who do act inappropriately.
Mr. Chair, and that would be the policy that would cover something like pencils or just bodily harm or anything else like that, that a student wanted to injure somebody without necessarily a weapon. So that's covered under the discipline policy.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Tom.
Chair, it's also covered in this, if you look at number 3 here, under definitions, number 3, no person shall use articles designed for their purposes. And it lists several, including pencils, scissors, to inflict bodily harm or intimidate, and such use will be treated as possession and use of a weapon. So it's also in here. All righty.
Yeah, and then I think there's also the, David, it's one, I'm sure you like this word, intent. The question of how you intend to use whatever it is you want to use, so.
Yeah, I know. I remember one case we had, case is a grand word, but a student had a protractor that stabbed another student, but I questioned whether they intended to or they were just waving their arms around.
All right, well, any other questions? I think we could probably keep banging away on getting all the definitions. We get a little too prescriptive, then we start opening up more opportunity. Yeah, Jim?
And that's the case with policies like this. But in Section 4A, it talks about a student finding a weapon on the way to school or some impractical or dangerous. If he immediately, he or she immediately turns the weapon over to an administrator, teacher, or head coach, or immediately notifies an administrator, teacher, or head coach of the weapon's location, or something like that. Would, for instance, a student walking along and finding a gun along the gutter, takes it into the bus, would a bus driver, a para, or any other adult serve in that capacity? Or is it necessarily, say, a licensed person to handle those types of situations?
Good question. I would like to think that, you know, if that were to happen, that a bus driver could help with that. So I think that could be in addition or amend this a little bit for the second reading.
You know, I'm sorry to bring these little things up, but I've had time over the past month, you know, to read a lot of these things. So it's just part of the game.
It's all right, Bill.
I can one-up you, Jim. So like, here's a story. Hyannis West Elementary School, student faces suspension. Elementary school faces suspension for making a Lego gun at the playground. So, I mean, do we need to address that? Has that ever been an issue here? Are we making work for ourselves? We say, you can't make Lego guns, or someone brings in the, you know, I've heard the story where you bring in the little Star Wars Lego guy and he has a lightsaber and it's this big and, well, that's a weapon, because you kill people with them. I mean, are we going too far? We have enough sense to not do that in Bloomington?
If we, like I said earlier, if we get a little, if we get too prescriptive, we actually open up opportunities for people to read between the lines, so.
Right. And, yeah. Board Member Oliva, we have enough sense.
Just making sure. It's a toy, but it's a toy, it's a toy.
Okay. Are we good with this one for our first reading? And then Eric will modify and massage it for the second.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Let's see, next one up, we're looking for proposed payable 2014, payable 2015 property tax levy. And to help us understand this, that information is Rod Zivkovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. Who would like to read this one in? I have a hard copy, if anyone wants it. There you go.
Mr. Chair?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the property tax levy for the proposed 2014 payable 2015 levy of $49,556,364. Be it further resolved in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of the School Board of Independent School District 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law. The state requires the district use the term maximum on the certification sheet to allow these corrections to the levy.
Second. All right. Thank you. All right, Rod, you've got an interesting document in front of you. I want you to help us walk through this.
Chair Burks, I'm Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is the start of the levy process and also the start of the budgeting for the 15, 16 school year. The objective of this presentation is to prepare the board to make an informed decision on the preliminary levy tonight. We will need board action on the levy. Part of the overall presentation will be a review of truth and taxation process and then the preliminary levy 2015 information. The overall truth and taxation process starts with the board approving a preliminary, which needs to be done and into the county by September 30th. That information is used to prepare tax statements that go out to the taxpayers, and those go out to the taxpayers' homes in November. We will come back to the board in December, where there needs to be a truth and taxation budget update meeting, where the community can come and ask questions about the levy and the budget. And then the board is looking, we're looking for the board to give approval on the final levy on December 8th. And then the county will take that information and send out property tax bills after the first of the year. We received our first bit of information from the state on September 9th. Tonight, as I mentioned, we are going to be updating or looking for approval of the preliminary levy. September 30th, the information needs to be into the county. And the eighth, so the two submissions or the two decisions by the board are on September 12, or 22nd tonight, and also on December 8th. If you look at the, the process itself, MDE calculates our preliminary amounts based on statute and information the district provides, such as enrollment and other items. There are five major categories within the levy process. There's the referendum. There's referendum other or equity. There's community service levies, debt service, and other. As was read in the resolution, the district, School Board can determine whether they want to levy the maximum, or some won't lessen the maximum. So if we look at the referendum to start, referendum is a voter-approved authority. Our voter-approved authority has an inflationary factor. That's why you see the increase in amount from the 1,068 to 1,119. Our pupil units were slight decline between the two years. So it shows our referendum calculation of $11.9 million last year and up to $12.3 million this year. And again, that's mainly due to, toward the inflationary factor. So you look at that 300,000 increase, or 2.6% is the inflationary increase of our referendum. We have prior year adjustments, and you can see that it's pretty consistent between the two years. So our overall total levy for referendum is an increase of 300, just a little over 300,000, or 2.4%. Our next area of referendum other, which is our equity levies. Equity revenue, the first one there, is an increase of 123,000. Equity revenue is based on the disparity between the highest and lowest revenue districts within a region. So what the, the state does is it looks at the top 95% and sees how far off of that 95% our district is. The second category there is the bond, board-approved. That was a, in legislation last year, where the board could take a current levy that the district had and change it over to a board-approved versus in that first category that we mentioned before. And you can see with the decline in enrollment, we show a slight decline in those dollars. Location equity is also in addition in the last year's legislation, where the board has the ability to approve $424 per pupil unit. And again, you see the drop there because of the enrollment change. Our adjustments between years, can see that there's a little higher of adjustment in the equity. So our overall, we show our levy for equity going up $150,000, or 1.7%. Our next category is community, community service. Really no change in this overall levy. A slight increase in the basic community service revenue and a slight increase in the adjustments. So 0.7% increase overall. Our next category, debt service. Debt service, what we're showing is a $1.6 million increase. If you remember correctly, last year, we did some refinancing. We took the savings of the refinancing in the first year. We will showing the adjustment of an increase this year, but you'll see within the next category of other, we show a decline. So it's just more of an offset between two different categories within the levy. So if you look at the overall total levy in this area, it's going up 1.4 million, or 15.5%. If we move to the other category, you look at, it's $1.6 million and going down 41, or 0.3%. So if we look at our overall levy between the two years, we show that our base levy is at 48.6 million, or $7 million. Our next year's is 49.556, or an increase of $865,000, or 1.8%. When we went to the taxpayers last year for our capital projects levy, we, we mentioned to them that we were going to keep our non-operational levies flat through the period of time that the original capital projects levy was in place, which is the 17, 18 school year. If you can see in this presentation right now, the difference between the 2014 and the 2015 is $205, or, or flat between the two years. This slide, I have to apologize to the board. I needed to change this from what was in your packet. But this is a comparison of the median value homes between last year and this year. Last year, a median value home was $188,000. Current year, the information I received from the city is that it's gone up to 206,900,000, which is a 10.1% increase in value. If we look at the county, city, and school, based on what the projected increases for, for all those categories, we show that we're going up $154, or 57%, or 5.7% on those amounts. On the school tax, going from an 8.45 to an 8.87, or $42, or 5%. And basically, this was built on, this assumption is the city is planning a 4% increase. The county at 2.75, and as you saw on that last sheet, the district is at a 1.8%. So the next steps, board action tonight, adopting the preliminary levy. Any levy changes can be done until September 30th. After that point in time, it's locked in. The school boards certifies either the levy at a maximum or as a number less. The county will take those numbers at, as of September 30th and calculate them out. The final levy, levy limitation and certification will be done on December 8th. And again, the, at that board meeting, we need to set aside time for public comment on the current levy and budget. Questions?
All right, great. Lot of information, lot of numbers to, it's not like balancing my own checkbook, so. Questions, comments?
I had a question.
Sure.
Because this is my first time through this process, I just wanted to clarify. So if we set the maximum tonight, then December 8th, we could come back and set it to anything below that. But if we set it at zero today, it's zero.
Correct. And that's why the, the state sets it up that way, because there are a lot of calculations that are being done behind the scenes with the state. One of the things is usually we'll have a, a sheet to be signed by the clerk tonight. The state still doesn't have their system up to be able to print out the reports to have it, so we'll have to get back with the clerk later to sign that sheet. So it's, it just gives the district that if they have a board meeting earlier than the end of the month, just to be able to make those, get us to a certain point, and then we can always reduce it at a future point.
Yeah, Jim?
I just had a question on it, one slide, two slides back, where it talks about the tax comparison on the median.
Yes.
Is that second column supposed to be paid 2015?
Uh, yes.
It says pay 2014, 2014, okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? As long as we have Rod up here. All right, we moved to a vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, Rod.
Just, I just have maybe a denim or something. I want to thank the superintendent for sending us out so many of those communications on the various budget adjustments and the levy adjustments. From his communications that we get, it's really, it was helpful to, to see all the charts and graphs. Thank you.
I'll second that. All right, now, let's see, the last thing on part B is the demographic projections letter of agreement. And Rod's gonna sit right where he is. Who wants to read that one? Oops, Jim?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves a proposal from Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Services to provide demographic K-12 public school enrollment projections. Further, the School Board authorizes administration to enter into a letter of agreement with Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Services to accomplish this enrollment study.
Second.
All right. Rod, can you help us understand what this is again?
As we, we go about our rightsizing the schools, we needed to take a look at the future of enrollment. We've had studies, demographic studies done in the past. We thought that based on seeing some of our enrollment declining, we would take another look at enrollment by bringing in another demographer. We sent out five RFPs. We received two back in talking with other districts that have used both the two vendors that submitted requests. We recommend to the board tonight to go with Hazel Reinhardt.
All right, any, any questions, any comments? All right, let's, let's move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod, appreciate it. And now we move to board member reports. This is an opportunity for each board member to share with the community what, what we've been up to since we met last time. Anyone like to start it off? Jim?
I'll just, I'll just start it off briefly, because Saturday was such an exciting day for us all in Heritage, Heritage Days Parade. And I just wanted to thank the board for allowing me to not walk with them because of my knee, but instead I had a great opportunity to sit in the television booth, where we saw everybody come by, and it was just very impressive. There were 120 different units or entries into the parade, and over 30 of them, and that probably constituted maybe 200 to 300 people from our school district. For all the schools, the affiliations with the schools and the departments within the schools marching in the parade and exuding a positive influence that, you know, all the people along, along the route, you know, had little kids, or there were grandparents there and so forth. They just enjoyed it all. But 120 entries, a lot of them, most of them were from Bloomington or the immediate area, but some were from Richfield, some were from Minneapolis, and some were from out of state even. So they've heard the word about Bloomington Heritage Days, what an exciting time it is, a mini-state fair. So they wanted to come over and participate in it. And, and through that, we gained a lot of recognition and a lot of people wanting to participate in, in the big Bloomington event. But I just, from a different perspective that I've had in the past, we're marching in it and going with all of the different units. I said, this was really, really an exciting, probably the best one yet. And once again, with the leadership of Kendall and Fujitaki, they guaranteed the weather would be nice, and it was, so. It's a good time had by all.
All right. Thanks. Any, anyone else want to add anything in there?
Sure, I can go.
Yeah, Rick?
I had the Community Education Services Advisory Council meeting. And our very own Rick Kaufman and Chris Lennox presented at that meeting. And then Mr. Kaufman led a, a facilitated discussion with the members there about world's best workforce. And it was, it was interesting to get everyone's perspectives and what they cared about in the schools. And a lot of what came up, and just talking with the community in general, is the importance of, of things that are maybe a little bit harder to, to measure. So instead of just the, the competency tests, also, you know, social skills and socializing. And, you know, one of the members said, you know, I wish they ranked schools on how much recess and gym the kids got, instead of necessarily just the test scores, because having a, a well-adjusted person can be even more important than just getting an A on your, on your test. So I'm, I'm sure they will be giving us a full presentation or summary, executive summary at some point. But I just wanted to bring that up, that it was, the conversations are occurring, and they are, they're very well-received and interesting to listen to. And then our next Bloomington United for Youth meeting is at the end of, whatever, I guess we have five Wednesdays this month, so. Whatever the fifth one is, the 30th or something like that, so. I'll give a report after that.
All right. Did I see other, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I went to the PTSA meeting a couple weeks ago. And at the meeting, we had, Mr. Kaufman gave a, a presentation on our security updates. And there's also discussion that the PTSA council wanted to do a, a legislative candidate forum before the election, but it turns out that they could only, they could only get one candidate to show up because they're extremely busy right before the election. So they had to scrap that idea, and there will be a legislative town hall on December 4th that's going to be sponsored by the PTSA. And also, the PTSA stakeholder meeting will be Thursday, October 2nd, from 6:00 to 7:30. And I also went to, last Thursday, went to the Parent Advisor Council meeting for early childhood, and it was a whole bunch of new faces. Dick was there, he was one of the only faces I recognized. So I'd say in the six years that I've been on that committee, that's probably the most new faces we've seen. So they're doing something to get the, the word out. And it was a packed room of energetic people that want to, you know, get involved. And they're, they're busting at the seams over there. 13 of their 16 ECFE classes are full, and all but two afternoon preschool classes are full. And that was as of Thursday, so they might have, have more by now. And the stakeholder meeting for that will be on Thursday, October 9th, from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Pond Center. And then also, last week, had the Health Associates negotiations, went really well. And then also, last week, had the health associates negotiations, went really well. Our next session will be this Wednesday. Let's see, what else? Also, we had the labor management committee meeting last, or two Wednesdays ago, and a lot of the discussion on that was the direction of labor management, and there's going to be a special meeting this coming Wednesday to kind of set goals and determine which direction they want to go, if they want to have two different committees, one a health management and one a labor and management issues, or it should be an entertaining or interesting meeting, so if anyone's, I know Maureen and I will be there. Anyone else wants to show up at 7:30 on a Wednesday, would be great. There was also a discussion after that meeting, what's that?
AM.
AM, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was also a discussion in that meeting, what's the board's role in that, on the LMC? And it was under, I was under the impression that it's like any other non-board committee or council that we sit on, that we're there to observe and report, and then it was brought to my attention after the meeting that according to their bylaws, that the two assigned school board members are actually full participating voting members of the committee. And that was news to me, and it was news to Maureen, so I'm assuming it's news to everyone here. So I kind of wanted to, you know, inform you guys, we're on the same page, and if anyone had any comments about that. Hearing none, we'll move on. And I think that concludes my report.
All right. Now, Don, I saw you did have your hand up.
Oh, I didn't see you.
Okay, I attended a collaboration between Hennepin County Children's Mental Health, Autism Society, and the Bloomington Schools that was here in the boardroom. It was really a great parent-community engagement, the room was full when I stopped by, so they had a lot of parents there. I was learning to tell their story so people will listen, I guess it was kind of the title of the workshop. I also attended the service awards presentation for Educational Services Center and District Support Services staff one morning last week sometime. I visited the Transition Center's new space and the new SUN program that went into where the Transition Center used to be. The SUN program is Students with Unique Needs program, and those are students all with autism and students with pretty significant needs, pretty, you know, challenging, challenging issues, and, you know, I just got to say, the staff and the teachers that are doing that are quite remarkable. And, you know, it's hard to explain unless you've lived it, you know, what that is probably like, and just thank you to them for getting up every day and going back because it is exhausting work. I also, Director Corman and I attended Minnesota School Board Association's Fall Regional Meeting. The presentations there were a new superintendent evaluation that's done by MSBA and the Minnesota Association for School Administrators collaborated and did a new superintendent evaluation. And then they also did some stuff on emerging issues for school districts, what was coming up, what they thought was coming up this year. The Special Ed Advisory Council also met and had their stakeholders meeting, World's Best Workforce and Pathway to Graduation. That was Eric Melby was the presenter, and Rick Kaufman was the facilitator. So there was really great conversation there. And I also attended a meeting at Pacer with Barb Trillane from the Department of Ed. She also had just been involved with a meeting prior to that, I guess, with the Federal Department of Ed, and on their performance report for the state of Minnesota. And Minnesota was, this is under special ed, was one of the 13 states that has met the requirements according to the feds, so I guess we could get a good report there in Minnesota on that. She also did quite a discussion on some changes that are coming in school finances around special ed funding and some changes that are, I think she called that this will be the transition year on those, so, thank you.
All right, and anyone else? Yeah, Nellie?
Yeah, okay, well, I, of course, as everybody else, went to the Bloomington Heritage Days Parade, and after that, in the afternoon, I was there too. Very fun to be there, and it was very fun also to be at the football game last Friday. Besides that, like Director Stegaf said, I attended that MSBA Fall Regional Meeting. Very good information about superintendent evaluation, so it's something that I will be sharing with my committee sometime soon. And I'm going to be attending the stakeholder conversations, both this Thursday, coming Thursday, with the Latino parents, and on Saturday morning with the youth leadership. And next week, oh, I almost forgot, I also attended the Dementia's Academy Curriculum Night at Oak Grove Elementary. And this coming Sunday, I will be traveling to Washington DC to attend the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials and National Summit of the State of Latino Education, which is going to be focusing on creative and comprehensive system to promote teacher quality. And this would be something that would be directed to continue to support all of our students, not only Latino students, but all of our students. So that should be inspiring. I'll be there for three days, coming back on Wednesday afternoon. And that's all.
All right.
You know, I forgot to mention that prior to this meeting, we had our Youth Advisory Council meeting.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Director Corman couldn't attend, so she doesn't get to vote, I mean, the conversation just centered around, are we going to meet four times with the students? I believe that this year, we're going to try meeting twice with the middle school, twice with the high school, instead of doing the one combined meeting. And also, I had an opportunity to go to, I received an invitation from Veep to attend a legislators' conversation over at the Veep office, which I went to this last week. And while I was there, I was talking to the executive director, I believe Susan Freeman is the last name, and we thought that having the Veep meeting, we meet with students about Veep, doing it there and having the students possibly go on a tour and see the facility would be beneficial to them and help inspire them to really understand what it is that they are raising money and raising food donations for. So we were going to talk about that as a possibility and maybe schedule something with them. I believe on Mondays, they close their doors at 4:30, so if we could meet there at, say, 5:00, the students would be able to take a tour and there wouldn't be clients in the building anymore. So that was the gist of that. I'll get the notes over to administration so they can see if we can make that happen.
Great, great, thank you. Yeah, go on.
Sorry, I forgot something too. I just wanted to say, I also, after the football game, stopped by the homecoming dance Friday night, and you know-
What time did that start?
Yeah, well, the dance started much earlier than the football players got there because, as most people know, there was a delay of the game. We had to empty the stadium because of weather, and so the poor football players got there for like the last maybe 15 minutes of the dance. It still all looked like everybody's having a great time.
All right, anyone else?
Well, most of mine have already been covered, so.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll keep my list short. Was happy to attend the Kennedy Homecoming Game, a lot of fun, right up until we had to clear the stadium for the, I think it was a lightning alert, there's, if it's within five miles, something like that, you have to clear the stadium, so. Had the parent advisory meeting, as Tom mentioned, that was packed full. Just a real quick shout-out to all of our volunteers in the district. We really, we really rely on our volunteers and really honestly, we couldn't be as robust as we are without our volunteers. So it starts, there's any number of opportunities, and they do start in our preschool program with a parent advisory council all the way up through our high schools. So, attended Olson Elementary PTA meeting, their first meeting, that was packed. Nice, again, nice to see all the volunteers there, a lot of positive energy. Heritage Days Parade was a lot of fun. We had some, had some, a good time handing out our school wristbands. If you saw some discombobulated souls running around in spirit, where that was probably your school board members going from side to side and here and there, but it's such a great opportunity to interact on a one-to-one personal level with our, with our public. I know that everybody loves it. Had an opportunity to attend the Lakeville, I think it was called the Lakeville Invitational, it's the middle school cross-country, and watched all of our students down there from Olson and Oak Grove, and I think there was some from Valley View as well. Great day, lot of fun, nice venue. It's always fun to see those guys run around. Also, want to say thanks to Anne Marie Terpstra from our transportation building for showing me the cameras, and we have five buses that have cameras that will catch people if they blow through the stop arm, so that camera's, it's either always on or it goes on when that stop arm goes out. So we're watching, we're making sure that the people are obeying the laws. Also, in our last meeting, and I won't read this whole thing, we had a bunch of seniors come up from the civics class, and one of the seniors stayed after and waited in line to chat with me. She came up to me, she asked me if I had some time, and she wanted to tell me some ideas she had. And she stated her case just magnificently. So if you're watching, I told you that I talked about your email, unfortunately, I don't have time to read the whole thing, it's two pages long. What I did was I asked this senior from Jefferson to write down their comments and then send them to me, and then I would look at them and I would share them, at least with the superintendent. I made no promises for changes, but this young lady shared her, not only did she share her comments, but I don't think if I spent the next 10 years, I could write a document this nicely written. So she did a great job, and I appreciate that. So anyone that has any comments that they want to send, if you're a student, if you're a member of the public, earlier this year, I read a, it was an essay from an Olson Elementary second grader who didn't like the toilet paper, and he wrote a neat little essay on how scratchy and uncomfortable it was. So I'll take them from anyone, so don't be afraid, go ahead and send them. That, that ends my report. We move to the superintendent.
Congratulations to Ms. Heather Young, she's a reading teacher at Valley View Middle School. She won last week's, WCCO's Excellent Educator Award, and she won the award for successfully inspiring our students to read books. If you Google WCCO Heather Young, you can watch the news video. The next thing is on, I'd like to recognize the board. The school board established for the 1415 school year, this current school year, a goal to engage the community, the school community, and they established a plan, a community engagement plan, and they're executing that plan, and they showed up at Heritage Days. They also showed up for football games, they're showing up at staff and student events and parent events. So congratulations to the board, they're well on their way to completing that goal. Congratulations. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
One comment on the Heather Young report. She was actually a student of ours many years ago, and she gives credit to her fifth grade teacher, who she's now a co, not a co-teacher, but a-
A teammate.
A teammate of hers now at Valley View, so that was kind of, I thought that was really neat.
That is cool. All right, we move to the other portion. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add here? And we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, and we'll call this meeting adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break, we're going to rearrange the tables to a different configuration for our study session, and so it's 8:03 if we can have everybody back in here, let's say 8:08, 8:09, and then we'll start up our study session. Thank you.